All right. Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I can confirm that the notices were properly posted. All right. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We recognize the quorum of our board with six members present. Nancy Justman has an excused absence, and our superintendent Jen Wimmer also has an excused absence. So we're going to thank Lenny Hanson and other members of the team for filling in for Jen tonight. So next is approval of our agenda, and the agenda was printed for everyone, posted in advance. I would move approval of the agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you. Joel, motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Next up is our student reports, and we invite Raymond Spores to come up. Raymond, good to see you again.
All right. Good evening. So West winter sports have fired up since I was last here, which means basketball, bowling, gymnastics, skiing, and snowboarding, hockey, wrestling, and board swimming are all in full swing. The West gymnastics team competed in man-to-man this last weekend and got second place. This Wednesday, they will be taking on East at 6:30 in the Sky Garden, so hope to see as many people there as possible. Spartans wrestlers finished fifth place this weekend with three individual champions at Sun Prairie. The wrestling team will be traveling to Minnesota on Thursday for a tournament, so good luck to all the Spartan wrestlers. The boys swim and dive team has their conference relay meet this Tuesday in our high school auditorium. And on Friday, West basketball will be taking on East in a doubleheader. The girls' game begins at 5:45 in the Fieldhouse with the boys' game immediately after. So come check out all our Spartan athletes and all other games and activities around the athletics website. So last Wednesday, Student Council partnered with Veracity Blood Center to host a blood drive in our south gym. So we collected 244 units of blood, which will save up to 672 lives from a single blood drive. And our students also raised $1,750 for scholarships. So thank you to all who donated both blood and money. West senior Bella Baker recently signed her national letter of intent to play Division One soccer at University of Illinois Chicago, so congrats to Bella and good luck at University of Illinois Chicago. Coming up this June 2022, with registration starting just now, is Badger Boys State and Badger Girls State. So this is a great opportunity, and it's completely free thanks to scholarships from our local American Legion chapters. So any current high school juniors or seniors who are interested should see Mr. Schloss or Mr. Graff for more information. With the ACT coming up at the high school, Wisconsin Test Prep will be offering an in-person ACT prep class at our high school. So these sessions begin on December 20th, and you can sign up online right now on the Wisconsin Test Prep website. And in addition to that, Method Test Prep, which is an ACT prep program purchased by the district, is available to all students for free through their Zelle accounts. Studies show that this specific program can raise ACT scores back to three points, so it's really valuable resource. And we're dedicating resource time in January and February for all students to work on this, but students can access this right now through their Zelle accounts. And finally, we're already starting to think about graduation. There will be a mandatory meeting for all seniors in the auditorium on January 5th during resource to meet with our local Jostens rep to talk about graduation packages and other things like that. So that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you keeping us connected to what's going on in the schools. All right. We move on to recognition of fall state qualifiers. And Erin Dove, I'm sorry, Erin Dove is sitting next to me. Erin Felber, however, is going to walk us through and introduce these folks. I see first we have up recognition of West Bend Girls Swim and Dive.
Erin Dove, I know you could do a great job, too. So on behalf of both East and West, so it's a co-op team, so Molly Hanks is back here representing East as well. Just want to congratulate you. I know we were all at State cheering you guys on, and it was fantastic. So we're going to hear all the details from Coach Dave Blumier and our dive coach Alex Kane. So come on up, Dave.
This is Alex Kane, my diving coach. I'm Dave Blumier, swimming coach. Ladies, would you come up? Stand up.
So everyone can see you. Why don't you come up to the front and face that way? And then the cameras will be able to see you.
And your international friends.
That's right. Perfect.
Well, this is our 2021 Girls Swim and Diving State Qualifiers, and we had three individual qualifiers, as I called their name. Madison Rumel is a freshman who qualified in diving. She is not here. Like a great athlete, she's at practice. Okay? She knows her priorities. But Alex, I got to give Alex all the credit. We have an outstanding young group of freshmen divers, and she qualified with 400 points qualifying for State. Outstanding job. Our next freshman, Lily Inkman. She qualified in the five, Lily's first, Lily, step a little bit further. Okay. Wait. Lily qualified in the 500 freestyle, and she'll be taking a step forward again. So Lily, thank you. No, bad. Seniors, help her out, okay? Our junior qualifier was Nicole Walters in the 100 fly. She came very, very close to breaking our school record. I hate to jinx ourselves doing this, but she qualified with a 57.79, and the record is 57.75. So we anticipate getting that next year, for sure. Okay? Our 400 free relay, all four girls, okay? Okay? First of all, senior Ashley Janikowski. Ashley, do you know where you're going?
St. Norbert.
St. Norbert. I think she's going to attend St. Norbert. We weren't sure at the end of our banquet, but now we know. So excellent choice. Ashley was our leadoff swimmer in the 400 free relay. Next senior is Marvin McDonald, is going to Whitewater. Great choice. Lily Inkman, freshman, again, was our third swimmer. And Nicole Walters was our anchor in the 400 free relay. And to cover our bases, we had Madison Ikkinen as our alternate. She trained all week for the week of the state, hung in there just in case COVID or whatever, anything else, you know, if it was an accident or something, we needed to put her in. All excellent student athletes.
And Erin, I think you're also going to introduce Washington County Trail Sharks.
We do have the Trail Sharks here, so we're going to be recognizing two of our fantastic student athletes, and Coach Rob Wilmis and his wife Julie Wilmis. Come on up, Rob.
My wife is not here tonight, and hopefully she's at home making dinner so we can go home and eat. So Quentin Wilmis, my son, and Anya Lancer both had the privilege of racing. So our program is a little bit different. So with our NICA program, all of our athletes qualify and get to race at State. But these two in particular finished in the top 10 for state athletes in their division. Quentin finishing, he's my own kid, and I don't remember, seventh place in the state at his division, and then Anya winning her division as a sophomore. So again, same, kind of same as the swim team, we're looking, they've got a good future coming up on them, and we're looking forward to next year with them. So, great job.
Congratulations, everyone, on all these accomplishments. As I've said at prior meetings, for student athletes, you know, the results don't happen without hard work and discipline, and those are skills that will follow you and be very, very important no matter where you go in life. So congratulations, congratulations there. I think that concludes our recognition. So this is a time where normally I pause and say, we 100% welcome anyone to stay at a school board meeting for the duration of the meeting, or if you wish, this is the time where you can get up and leave. So, yep, so I will pause. Thank you for coming. Next on our agenda is public participation, and I've got three comment cards turned in for public participation, so I will read our public participation policy. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but I urge you, copies are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or, when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. I will ask a participant to verify their name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. So I will invite the participants to come up to the podium and speak. Normally, we have a timer that appears on screen, but since there are only three of us here, I think we can manage that. I will time you. And so we will begin. The first comment card that I received was from Bill Schultz. If you'd please come up. Bill, and it says here that you are a parent of the student in the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Please proceed.
As the days go by and we draw closer to the new year, I often wonder, what day are we on of 14 days of flatten the curve? 618, 625? Does anybody even know? COVID-19 is not the end of all viruses like we have been led to believe. Life has returned to normal for those who choose for it to be. Yet the West Bend School District still feels the need to control how the students learn with masks. Why? Nancy Justman said at a previous board meeting that the students need to be disciplined and held accountable for their actions, to which I fully support, as well as I fully support the same for teachers, principals, board members, and people in authoritative positions. Lance Rell, principal of Silverbrook, sent out an email to parents a few weeks ago saying that students were to return a class after Thanksgiving in Phase 1, but masks in motion were to be enforced. When I called him out via email, asking if the school was in Phase 1 or Phase 3, he couldn't answer clearly. Clearly, he didn't want to answer that question. So will he be disciplined for not following the already flawed COVID-19 policy, or is he allowed to create his own policies? Chris Weigart, you said at the last board meeting how you were so happy that the school board allows the parents the freedom of choice. Is it true, or if this is true, the next time my son's class moves out of Phase 1, I choose to send him to school without a mask, as that is not only his choice but mine, as he learns and he feels if he learns more effectively without a muzzle on his face that God gave him? Freedom of choice, such a beautiful thing. Two weeks ago, I emailed all of you, and all of you but one chose not to do your job and not respond. It is your job to communicate with the parents when questions arise, something I give Jen Wimmer a hell of a lot of credit for. Over the last few months, she has taken a lot of time out of her days to speak with me over the phone and through email to help me find answers to the questions that I have, something I think you should all take note of. I ask you all to allow the parents the freedom of choice to send their children to school with or without a mask. The COVID-19 four-phase policy offers no freedom of choice to the parents and students. I am sick and tired of having to send my child to school not knowing if he's going to have to wear a mask at any particular time. Enough is enough. Do your damn jobs, or we, the people, will vote you out with people who are competent and willing to promote change regardless who likes it or not, as it is your jobs to make the policies that best suit our children and allows them to be in a learning environment that doesn't restrict their God-given abilities. If these policies do not change, you all are going to have one hell of a mental health crisis that I hope your SEL is ready to tackle.
Thank you. Our next participant is Jody Geenan. Jody, if you'd please come forward. And you are resident of the district, correct?
That's correct.
Great. Please proceed, Jody.
Okay. In November, I was told by a concerned resident of the school district that a teacher of the school district had mentioned being flustered about learning that the second grade would be teaching about vaccines as part of the curriculum. First of all, why would we teach about vaccines in second grade, or any grade for that matter? We send our children to school to learn academics. Second, vaccines are pharmaceuticals, and just like all pharmaceuticals, they come with risks. If medicine were a one-size-fits-all, we wouldn't need doctors. So unless the school district plans to also teach about the risks of vaccination, the school district would be teaching propaganda. Third, vaccines have become very controversial and highly political. Many parents are losing their jobs because they believe in medical freedom to choose what gets injected into their bodies and the bodies of their children, and because they have deep religious convictions with regard to being vaccinated, especially where aborted fetal tissue was involved. Some families have experienced losses of lives and debilitation from side effects of COVID jabs and other vaccines. I imagine those families would be mortified to learn that the school district might be indoctrinating their children with a message that goes against their deepest faith and convictions. Fourth, part of my experience with the school district and vaccines has to do with the new sixth-grade National Geographic Social Studies resource that is currently under review and on hold, which has an entire unit dedicated to health and the promotion of vaccines. Why health would be taught in social studies instead of health classes beyond me, but it enlightened me to know that vaccines can be taught in any academic class, so we need to be cautious if this topic matters. Jen Wimmer assured me that promoting vaccines is not the West Bend School District way. I then suggested that she could solve the problem by simply sending a memo to all the teachers and staff that vaccines fall under School District Policy 381 of Controversial Issues, so they are not allowed to talk about them, just like what was done concerning CNN 10 in the classrooms. Instead of going with my suggestion, she promises to have a team comb through the curriculum to find any reference to vaccines. I appreciate the effort, I really do, but it won't solve the issue of well-meaning teachers who feel passionate that vaccines are the savior and decide to take it upon themselves to discuss them with the class because they weren't advised that vaccines are controversial and fall under Policy 381. Therefore, parents who are not okay with the possibility of teachers discussing vaccines might wish to submit something to the school district, opting their children out of such talks just in case. One word of caution about opting your children out of anything, though, parents were promised that they could opt their children out of SEL, and there are reports from some of those parents who did opt out that their children were not removed from SEL for whatever reason. One of the principals said he never received the opting-out emails, so he didn't alert the teachers. Parents beware and follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. And our third speaker tonight is Chris Thompson. Chris, if you'd please come to the podium. It says here you are a resident and parent of students in the district.
That is correct.
Great. Please proceed.
I'll adjust that. First off, thank you for allowing me and all of us the time to speak this evening. Appreciate it. I'll try to keep my comments brief, and I want to end with a simple request to all of you for this next calendar year. It's the time of year when property tax statements are being distributed out to the community, and I got mine last week. And as I reviewed the summary statement, something jumped out at me. Washington County was able to lower their amount over the last year by about 0.6%. The city of West Bend had also lowered its rate by 0.4% this last calendar year. Moraine Park Technical College had reduced its burden by 4.1%. All of this in spite of post-pandemic conditions, you know, lower employment problems, and the biggest inflation rate we've ever seen since the 1980s. Yet when I looked at the West Bend School District's rate, my eyes kind of bulged out because my tax burden had increased by a whopping 9.2%. Imagine my surprise since the presentation I heard from the last round of school board meetings this fall was proudly announced that our mill rate was going to be staying flat, and, you know, we should all give ourselves a pat on the back for doing a good job for keeping that mill rate flat. And this is not the first time I've heard all this talk about a mill rate. For the last several years, I've read numerous columns, articles, and letters to the editor pointing out that our mill rate does not matter. It's the tax levy that translates to whether or not our property taxes increase or change at all. Going back as far as 2019, the West Bend School District has voted to increase the tax levy every year, including 2020 during the pandemic, all the time packaging it up about mill rates not changing. The question citizens should be asking, and this is what I'm asking right now, is, where are all these tax increases getting us? We know it's, you know, is it to cover an increase in enrollment? Well, we know that's not the case. We're on a decline, and we're going on a continual decline for the foreseeable future. Is it to improve academic performance? Well, you might argue that, except that DPI had decided to move the goalposts this last year, and actually, our scores aren't that great, and certainly not as great as they're touted. What about facilities? I remember a couple of years ago, there was talk about our declining facilities and the work that was going to be needed to do to account for that. So far, I haven't seen a plan put forward or anything since the last round of the council review on that. So again, I ask, what is all this tax money going toward? And how can our city and county governments seem to eke out a tax savings for its constituents in the area, even during post-pandemic conditions and explosive rates of inflation, when it all and more gets swallowed up by the district? As our board and the representatives of this community, I think you owe us some answers for this. I'm a simple guy, and I try to speak plainly, and I appreciate it when people speak plainly with me. I'm sure that there's a lot of complexity that comes with understanding our financial health as a district. However, at the end of the day, taxpayers in this district want to know two things. Are our taxes going to go up or down? And very specifically, what are the reasons for that? And what does this tax burden get us in exchange? Even concept, sorry, even complex concepts like this can be broken down into very simple things, and that's actually the mark of a good teacher, in my opinion. I would respectfully ask that the board from now on stop talking about mill rates that doesn't mean anything and level with us. You insult our intelligence by doing anything less. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our public participation portion of the agenda. So we will move on to the consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have a number of items here. We've got minutes of the November 22, 2021 regular board meeting and executive session, disbursements posted through December 13, 2021, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July 2021 through November 2021, the school emergency operations plan, school safety drills. We have ratification of two certified staff contracts, but no resignations, no retirements. So that's what's on our consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Joel. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, thank you, Erin. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. All right. We're on to reports, and the superintendent's report will be given by Lenny Hanson. Lenny, good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer does wish she could be here, but she did send along a number of comments that she had hoped I could share with you about a number of important topics that are going on, so I'll do that at this time. The first topic does relate to the pandemic and our measures to meet our students, families, and staff's needs during the pandemic, so we're continuing to work with Washin Ozaki Public Health Department, a number of other school districts, and our nursing professionals to review and, where necessary, revise recommendations for our current mitigation strategies. This is in its early stage. Some of the items we are discussing include continued contact tracing with perhaps communication at the classroom level versus our current practice, which identifies small groups of individuals. Talked about options for reduction of quarantine to those with a positive case in their household, and keeping, you know, healthy students in school as much as we possibly can. We've also been discussing how to review the implications for exceptions for quarantine for some children ages 5 to 11, for example, who are now eligible for vaccination as well. And then also talked about reducing the number of days to produce a negative test from its current seven days that's required to possibly six days to allow earlier return for students from quarantine. So these are some of the items that are up for discussion with all of those stakeholders so that hopefully soon we can bring forth some ideas about how to continue, you know, get our healthy kids in school and keep learning going. In our last COVID-19 weekly newsletter, we included an optional survey for everybody. It had two primary questions regarding the efforts that the school district has made so far. Really, the two questions are very simple. The first one is from your perspective, what has been working with our process, and then what could be improved? So we really encourage everybody in the community and families to share their perspective and their thoughts so that we can continue our work and integrate those perspectives into our measures. Moving on, once again this year, the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Columns Concert is going to be coming up. It's actually tomorrow evening, the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert takes place, and it is a great fundraising event right here in West Bend at the Silver Linings Arts Center, and it's the fundraising that takes place there benefits scholarships for our students, so we encourage anyone who's interested to join a really outstanding world-class symphony and benefit our students at the same time. Monday, the 20th, there is also a high school choir concert at the Silver Linings Arts Center at 7 o'clock. As far as our community's ability to get lots of information about what's going on in the district, we want to make sure that that's really accessible to anybody in our community beyond just families, but also any community members and residents. So currently, our district news is published every other Wednesday, and then that is sent via email, as you know, directly to families, and now to community members who are interested. They can also sign up for our electronic newsletter. To do that, there's two different ways you can do that. They're both online. First, you can visit the homepage of our website, scroll all the way down to latest news, and then you just click on the subscribe information link. The other way is to check out the news and events on the section of the website, and the district newsletter is there, and then there's a subscribe option as well. So again, we want to get information out to people as much as possible, let people know what's going on in the district and share their thoughts as necessary, so we want to make sure that people know how to sign up for that newsletter. Next major topic to talk about tonight will be talked about later as well with curriculum related to literacy. It'll be discussed further, but we do want to highlight that the primary teacher resources that we're recommending for use to develop lessons in literacy for grades K through 8 are currently available to anyone who wants to view them. They're at the West Bend Memorial Public Library through tomorrow, but we want to make sure that there's lots of opportunities. So the resources are also available to view here, right here at the Education Services Center, all the way until December 22. And we, anyone can come in, view those resources, and then provide us with feedback as well while they're here doing that. So there are hours available in the evening to view those, as well as this coming Saturday. So our website has more information about those opportunities. We really invite the public to come check out those teacher resources and really give that feedback. Finally, winter sports are now in full swing. You can check the athletics calendar for basketball, wrestling, swim and dive, and much more, and there's competitions nearly every evening if you're looking to get out. So that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Great. Any questions for Lenny? Thank you for pinch hitting. All right. We'll move on then to our Curriculum Committee report, and Erin Dove will be walking us through that. Erin?
Okay. So the Curriculum Committee was held last Tuesday, December 7. There are a couple items up for discussion. One is the K-8 Literacy Resources, which Lenny touched on and is furthered out in our agenda, so I will leave that for, I think Laura's going to be talking about that. Second thing on our agenda was summer school programming update, and that was just a very high-level look at possible updates or changes to what summer school could look like for next summer. They're examining everything from class options to times to buildings, to possibly doing two different sessions, so kind of everything's on the table right there, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that in the future. The third item on the agenda is the process for review of the The third item on the agenda is the process for review of the Board Policy 300 Series, which is the instructional series. And I think that's going to be touched on today, too, with the policy committee. And then the last thing on our agenda last Tuesday was an informational item for educational options for the West Bend District in 2022-23. And that's something that will be in more depth later in our agenda.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Erin? All right. Then we'll move on to the policy committee report, and Joel Ongert will give us a little brief update.
Yep. So the policy committee will be tackling the 300 Series, which is our instructional series of board policy in the next few months. It'll start right after the new year. And this series really kind of goes hand in hand with the curriculum committee, because a lot of these policies, or potential any changes to them, will come out of Assistant Superintendent Laura Jackson's division, and some of them could come to the curriculum committee first. Some of them, if it doesn't pertain necessarily to the curriculum committee, it would maybe just come directly to policy. But needless to say, the 300 Series really does go hand in hand, because it deals with curriculum and instruction. And so we will be tackling those in the next few months here, starting after the new year.
Great. Any questions for Joel? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to our information items. And the first item is educational options for 2022-23. Laura Jackson will be walking us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Zweigert, and members of the board. Today, I get to speak with you about the educational options available in the West Bend School District for students in the 2022-23 school year. Every year in December, parents are sent a notice, and we send it through our regular school district newsletter and post it to our website. And that notice just identifies things that are specifically required in state statute to let everyone know what's available in our district. I'm going to kind of highlight that and let you know what's all included in on it. So the first thing that is included is our current school report card ratings. Last year and the year before, we had the 2018-19 ratings on, because those were the most recent ones. So we did receive school report card ratings for the 2020-2021 school year, and so those have been updated in our current on the annual parental notice. Then we start the notice going through with our youngest students, talking about the programs that are available for students as young as age three. At times, students have special education needs that can be addressed early on and are identified early on, and they get to participate in our three-year-old special education programs. And then we have 4K and Head Start for our four-year-olds. Those programs, our 4K programs, are embedded throughout the community at various centers and locations, and so that information is included in the annual parental notice. We talk about specialized programming for students, and new on this year's annual notice is the designation of, and there's the specific identification, of the youth apprenticeship options. So currently, in West Bend, as part of our school-to-work programming, we have 11 different kinds of youth apprenticeship opportunities available to our 11th and 12th grade students, and students can take advantage of those. That was not previously spelled out and identified on this, and due to recent legislation, that will be part of this ongoing throughout the future. Other educational options, again, are listed up within. We currently have a nursing assistant, someone, a healthcare professional manning a clinic at every one of our schools. We also have a full-time counselor and school psychologist at every one of our schools, and that's not typical, but those are some great services for our students that support their academic wellness. Then we describe the early college credits, Start College Now, and part-time open enrollment options for families. We identify the virtual program. It's not a separate virtual school at this time. It still is a program offered. So families from outside the district that enroll in the district can attend the program, but they have to be attending a class in person as well. But students who reside within the district boundaries can access that virtual programming. We also then talk about what's available in the private school. For students who are attending private schools, they can take up to two classes within our school curriculum. But we also identify the private school enrollment options and what schools are participating in that. Now, the private school choice program, that gets updated by the Department of Public Instruction at a different time of the year. So we always link the right to DPI's website on that, because if another school within the district boundaries were to qualify for that program, DPI would update that information right away. So we list them that are current as of the publishing of this document, but then we link directly to DPI, so that people can see that. And then our education of homeless students as required by the McKinnevento Act, and some services to maintain educational stability for our homeless students. This notice, the annual parental notice, goes out before the end of the calendar year to let parents know what's available in the upcoming school year. It also gets published as a Class 1 Notice by the end of January. And so as a Class 1 Notice, we would publish it in the Daily News, because that's our local newspaper. So in January, this notice will be published as a Class 1 Notice. Are there any questions about this?
Any questions from the board? It's like this is a statutorily required notice, and largely consistent with what we've done in prior years.
Yes, it is. The addition of the, we revised the report card scores, the youth apprenticeship is added in, and then we always check our private schools that participate in the choice program.
Great. All right. If this is an information item, we don't need to take action on this? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move to action items, though. We've got a field trip request, Winter Guard Out-of-State Field Trip Request, and Laura, I think you're going to take this one as well.
Yes, thank you. Our Winter Guard is an extracurricular/cocurricular activity that starts at Silverbrook, includes students at Badger Middle School, and at both of our high schools. Kathy Nino has brought students forward here for recognition in the past, because that Winter Guard team has done really well in our Midwestern competitions and our national competitions. Part of doing really well is making sure that you can compete and have the opportunity to watch other competitors at a really high level. The competitions that they would like to go to are in northern Illinois. They're actually relatively close to West Bend, but they are all in northern Illinois, which requires board approval in order to take students across the state line. So they are looking, starting in February and going through April, at multiple trips to Illinois in order to allow our students to perform and compete at a very high level with other schools and other clubs from all over the Midwest at the competitions described in the pamphlet. The team and the parent volunteers have a ratio of about three to one. So students will be closely supervised while they're at the competition. We have about three to one chaperones to students that will be able to participate in the trips to the competition. And again, the team really has, they've practiced, they are excited to go, and this gives them the opportunity to earn the accolades necessary and accomplishments necessary to go to the Midwestern finals. Are there any questions about the Winter Guard request?
Laura, transportation is done via...
Correct. Thank you for asking right way this year.
Okay. So we're taking one bus, two buses?
Right now, I believe we only need one bus.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Laura, I may have addressed this, but I saw on here that the school district is not responsible for any direct financial aspects of this, from a cost perspective?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions for Laura?
Please tell Kathy thank you for the proposal. She put together quite the packet on this. I am going to abstain from this one, because my daughter is involved in this program and will be going on this trip, so to avoid any potential conflict, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Other questions?
I think it's a great opportunity, and I think our community would be happy to have these girls represent them, and the fact that they've done so much work to raise money for it also says a lot about their commitment and dedication. So I'm going to be voting yes.
I'll move to approve the West Bend Winter Guard proposal to participate in competitions in Illinois between February 2022 through April 2022.
Second. Motion and second to approve the proposal for the out-of-state travel. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye.
All right. With that, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Lenny Hansen will join us at the podium for our next agenda item, which is market analysis of school nutrition department positions. Lenny?
Thank you. As you recall from our last meeting, we've been engaged in a three-year cycle of reviewing wages in all of our positions, so that at least once every three years, we're able to ensure the market competitiveness for recruitment and retention purposes of our employees. This year, there's several positions that are up for analysis, and we reviewed several, the majority of them actually, at our last meeting. The next one today that I'm bringing forth is a recommendation related to our school nutrition department. That department is headed up by our Director of School Nutrition, Abby Padilla. Her and her team do an outstanding job, serving literally hundreds of thousands of meals to students every year. And the work that they do to do that each and every day is quite intense and quite busy, and I'm very happy to bring forth some recommendations around that, because the wages in that department have not been looked at in quite some time, and I think we have some adjustments that are worth pursuing. The first thing I want to really highlight around school nutrition budget, wages, all of those pieces, is that anything you do with school nutrition budget does not actually impact the district's overall budget. It doesn't impact taxes. It doesn't impact property taxes. That's because school nutrition, per DPI rules, operates very differently from what the rest of the, the majority of the rest of the school district operation operates as. School nutrition actually operates almost like its own standalone business, and this is true not just here in West Bend, but all school districts. It's completely self-sustaining. So it sustains itself based on the dollars that it collects, either in what students pay for lunches, or what's reimbursed to them through the U.S. Department of Agriculture for the serving of meals. So for every meal that they serve, they receive a reimbursement or a payment from a family. As you know, right now, the charging of meals to families has not been going on, because the federal government has been providing funds for all students to be able to get free meals from their school programs throughout the pandemic. So that has certainly increased the workload on this team, who works extremely hard already, as we have seen even greater participation in our meal programs. What I have brought forward today, you'll see a number of recommendations for adjusting the wage scale pertaining to school nutrition. We want to make sure that we appropriately divide groups, depending on who has certain types of responsibilities, whether it be responsibilities around supervision, responsibilities around health and safety items, and all those sorts of things. And then I sat down and worked on this multiple times with our Director of School Nutrition, Abby Padilla, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Andrew Sarno, who oversees school nutrition, and we feel we've put together a proposal that's really going to put us in a very competitive position. So there's two pages to the proposal you see. One is a new wage scale, which includes kind of starting wages for all of those positions. And then the second page includes how we would adjust current employees to ensure that we continue to honor years of service of our existing employees and don't have anyone passed by individuals who maybe have fewer years of loyalty to the district. Both proposals already include the adjustments that were related to holiday pay, which you approved at the November 22 meeting as well. So lots of information there, but hopefully you've had the chance to take a look at it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, our recommendation is to move forward this proposal as presented.
Lenny, standing question on all these adjustments. When was the last round of adjustments, significant adjustments, you know, market adjustments made to this class of positions?
So I honestly couldn't tell you. In terms of a comprehensive review, I don't know that that's ever taken place. In terms of occasional increases in one area, those have taken place, but not within the last probably at least three years. Certainly in my time, in this role, they haven't taken place. So, you know, we're happy to really look at it from a comprehensive nature, which allows us to be a little more proactive and not just reactive to, oh, my goodness, I can't hire in this one position. What am I going to do? So the goal here is for us to be able to do this a little bit more strategically. And like I said, if we only look at one position at a time, you know, then we run into issues where maybe those who are supervising those positions, the gap maybe becomes inappropriately too narrow. So looking at it in this comprehensive way, perhaps for the first time in decades, we think is the best way to do that.
Thank you.
What have we seen as far as turnover in these positions in the past two years?
Yes. So as I put into your, into the public information in board docs, certainly, we are struggling right now with recruitment and retention in school nutrition. We are hoping that these adjustments help us there, but I'll also say this is not a new phenomenon. This is not something that's just related to the, you know, recent labor shortage or the pandemic. We certainly had difficulties with recruitment and retention in this department that predated the pandemic. So we really took, we took a step back. We analyzed the entire department's budget, what it's able to accommodate, not just in terms of wages, but we're also looking to ensure that we can have a robust equipment replacement cycle as well within the department. And this fits within the budgetary constraints that already exist, so we don't need to even really expand, you know, from a budget perspective, the amount of revenue that we would project in order to accommodate this.
So just confirming, this vote is not increasing the overall budget that we're planned to spend in 21-22?
Correct. So when you think of the general school district budget, you know, what we levy, what we collect in state revenue, this department is not funded at all by those mechanisms. This is a completely self-sustaining department. It has its own fund. You know, when we talk about fund balance, you know, we're generally talking about that Fund 10, the general fund. This doesn't pull from that in any way. They have their own category, their own fund. You know, money goes in, money goes out, just like a standalone business would. And they're responsible for ensuring that their expenses every year are covered by the revenues that they bring in.
Just one comment. Those that aren't looking at board docs and seeing, these are positions that are making between $14 and $20 an hour, starting, and their wage increases forecasted about a buck to $250, in that range, right?
That's correct.
So just to state, one more comment. I'm a private sector employer, and the cost is going, we're having the same issue with recruitment. It's driving up the cost of wages to be competitive. These are positions that need to be staffed to feed, so I'll be voting in favor of it.
Yes. A lot of the discussion topics that we had the last time we spoke around certain positions, custodians, aides, those same challenges really apply to these positions as well. As you said, employees in kind of this wage band here, there's an incredibly competitive market for those individuals right now, and we need to ensure that we stay competitive, because as successful as Mrs. Padilla's program has been, the one thing that could throw a wrench in that is not having the people to actually deliver the meals. And we can't even technically have school open if we can't deliver meals. This is a critical, essential component of our program that I think is often overlooked. So it's also critical and essential that we ensure we properly staff it.
One of the things that's important to remember with this, and as Lenny gave a nice description of this, because it's really an enterprise fund, so when she's making money, she has the ability to build her own fund balance. They did add to fund balance a fair amount, a notable amount, last year. And so that was our first indicator. The second indicator, as Lenny also pointed out, the participation this year is going well. And so as we look at the financial projections from last August, September, when we had our annual meeting, in each and every month... And so as we look at the financial projections from last August, September, when we had our annual meeting, in every, each and every month, they're in a position where even, these will be a net increase in expenditures, but they do at this point in time, they're showing that they performed well last year, and they're going to be able to sustain the ability to fund this through their participation into this year and into the future as well as, as much as they're able to maintain that participation. So Abby always looks at a per meal, meals per hour, that she's analyzed that. So we feel very comfortable bringing this forward because it's a significant dollar amount that we're looking at, but it's going to have a very impactful, meaningful value to the program.
When do these adjustments take effect?
Yes, so these would take effect January 10th, which is the same date that we had discussed with the previous adjustments. That's chosen because it's the start of the first full period in the new calendar year for, gives us time to make the adjustments in our system. Also is very clean from a bookkeeping perspective to have everything in, you know, begin in that calendar year.
I'll move to approve the nutrition department wage adjustments as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve the nutrition department wage adjustments as presented. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Sarno, we've got a discussion item regarding district budget calendar. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for my allowing to be, step in there. And I hope I'm not breaking Robert's rules. That meant a lot.
We appreciate the additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, and I have to tell you, I hope this is brought forward in a little bit of levity. The document that we have here, it's a three-page document, it's an actual spreadsheet that we utilize. It's not pretty, but it's not meant to be. The purpose behind it is that it's meant to capture tasks, both statutory, internal, external, a comprehensive list of things that need to be done. And so when we take a look, and I mean, I'm standing here tonight in, call it mid-December, we've already been taking a look at next year's budget. So starting July 1st of 2020. And so there's a period of planning that goes into this well before the fiscal year starts. We have our 12 months from July 1st to June 30th. And then coincidentally here, on January 10th of '22, I'm going to be bringing forward last June 30th audit for discussion and acceptance two weeks later. So there's actually a period of 26 months that goes into kind of a full fiscal year between planning the fiscal year and the wrap-up. So this document, and you'll even see there's some crossing of fiscal year in this document because we want to make sure that we house everything, that we keep an eye on it, it allows us to plan accordingly. It's just a comprehensive document. So like I said, it's not, it's not meant to be pretty, but it is meant to identify important dates, the individuals who have responsibility, where decisions need to be made, and where action is undertaken. So like I said, some are statutory-driven, some are just meant to be internal for planning and our strategic use. It's meant to be comprehensive. It has just about everything we have. In fact, you'll even notice on the bottom of the document, I'll go down here, we even have three different items here that we know need to be built in here, but we don't have the dates yet. So we shared who it is, what it is, but we'll even make sure that we identify when we can, when, okay? All right, thank you. Oh, did it unplug? Oh, I moved it a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Tonight, we have discussion only, just wanted to keep you as well as all the stakeholders, both internal, external, community members engaged and informed. So that's the purpose behind this document. I'd even like to point out, I think it's right about, are we good? Even when we take a look at, I think it's right in, right at the bottom of the second page, but taking a look at the preliminary budget in June, and even then bringing forward a preliminary, it's right at the top of the, top of the third page. But even bringing forward on June 20th of '22, the school board determination of the annual meeting and the budget hearing date. So that was that Resolution 4 that was brought forward to the taxpayers back in September, in September. It was approved because the trust existed. We will be talking about this well in advance of the meeting, which will most likely be at the end of September. But again, comprehensive list between Mr. Hanson, myself, I have Mr. Ross's items in regards to facilities, where he's going to be coming in forward to get those facilities projects approved soon. Mr. Harder has some items on here. But I'd like to open it up for any questions. If anybody is wondering anything, I'd be happy to answer.
I really like this, Andy. I know that since you've been here, you've always been on top of these dates and bringing things to the board. This obviously just documents it, which is, which is great. The only thing I would maybe recommend adding, or at least getting your input on, is I think it's once a month, maybe once a quarter, that we approve revenues and expenses in the aggregate. Maybe that's something that could be plugged in here. If you don't agree with me, that's fine, but that is a financial piece that comes from you to the board on a scheduled basis. But other than that, I really like this, the way that this is laid out and documented, I guess. Like I said, you've always done a great job of bringing things to the board when they're due, but this documents the process so that we can refer to it at any time during the year. So thanks.
Thank you. I wrote that down as a note, and I will make sure I include those because that's totally appropriate. Thank you, Joel.
I agree. I think this is a really good reminder for the board of kind of the calendar of events, and also gives transparency to the public around what goes on in the finance department. You have one or two things to do, so appreciate that.
We are working right now in uploading a lot of prior year's audits, all of the, at least in my tenure, the three years of all the budgeting documents, the annual meetings, the original, the revision. But this would be a public document where we'd even be able to have that budget section where folks can see what this looks like and make sure that we're staying on top of it. But happy to have that transparency and make sure that we're doing what we can.
I'm assuming that if anyone in the community has any questions about how the finances of the district work, they are free to contact you?
Happily.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a good point, Tony. I'm reviewing all the checklist of all your dates that you had up, and that's available to everyone. I'm counting all the presentations to the school board. It's about 12 or so. Then there's a lot of internal steps you're doing as well. So it is talked about often in various parts of the budget. So I encourage everybody to look through this, and as I said, if they have any direct questions, they can go right to you to get answers, as well as listen to the presentations on those school board days.
Absolutely.
And any other questions, observations?
I also really like how this is broken down because since our budget is so big, it's not as simple as like a personal household budget. It's very, it's very important that we go through each of these things separately to understand how they work together. So I appreciate that we're doing this. Thanks.
If there is one area of improvement that we are striving to make, and in, again, with transparency, even bringing forward a more comprehensive budget document leading into the annual meeting, one of the things that we'd like to do is from an internal budget holders, whether that's a school principal or Assistant Superintendent Jackson, or Head Start Coordinator, any of those, we're making sure that we have a little bit more rigor behind how we're spending the money, data behind that. So we're even including some additional steps and making sure that we build upon that a little bit more on this next cycle.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time and effort and energy to put this together.
Thank you.
All right, our next discussion item is Wisconsin Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly Resolutions. And I think Superintendent Wimmer would have covered this, but I can unless you'd like to?
Sure, I can.
Go ahead.
I can cover it. So as you know, we are a member of WASBE, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and I was the delegate last year for the meeting, and I plan on being the delegate again this year unless somebody wants to do it. But that, the annual meeting is in January, and I haven't heard if it's in person or virtual this year. But WASBE puts together resolutions to advocate on behalf of the Association of School Boards to our state legislators. And so attached are 10 resolutions that could have come from WASBE, the WASBE executives in Madison, or they could have been resolutions that came from member school districts. Usually it says in here where they came from, but in this case, I don't see it, doesn't really matter. But this is what WASBE is going to be presenting to the delegates in January, and the delegates will decide, yea or nay, do we want you to advocate on our behalf to our state legislatures, to our state legislators on what these resolutions are. So for instance, the first one is a safe harbor legislation. So WASBE supports the passage of state legislation to protect youth who have been subject to child sex trafficking from criminal prosecution for prostitution. And you can read the rationale there. So the delegates will discuss that resolution and either vote to support it or obviously vote to deny it. And if the vote is to support it, then WASBE will then take that to our state legislators to tell them like, hey, we want a resolution and want you to pass legislation on this. So what I would ask is that you take a look at these if you haven't already, there's 10 of them, and reach out to me and let me know what you think. I don't know if we have a school board meeting between now and when this meeting is. If we do, then we will put this on the agenda for that meeting, and we can discuss at a board meeting if we want, you know, support, or if we're totally against one of these resolutions. Obviously, we are just one of, one vote of several hundred member school districts, school boards at this meeting, but still we have a vote. So I would just ask that you review these and let me know if we do have a meeting, we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Our next meeting will be January 10th for the school board. Would that be tight?
We will likely have a school board meeting before this meeting.
Great.
So let's, we'll put that on the agenda. So between now and then, take a look at these, and if you feel strongly one way or another about one of these resolutions, we can discuss it on January 10th.
Can I assume that there's more information than just, I mean, I guess even, I know there's 10 of them, and this, this document doesn't actually, this isn't the actual wording of the resolution?
By the time the meeting happens, there's about five to 10 pages on each resolution that describe who proposed the resolution and why. And so there's, I'm sure there's a lot more information. I didn't get the packet from WASBE. I'm assuming the school district did, that's how it's in our board docs tonight, so.
I will look to see if I can't get a couple nods, but I believe what we did last year, and this is a format that I've done elsewhere, is we will take all these different resolutions, and the key individuals that have some oversight or responsibility will provide the context, be able to share that with you along with some other key information pieces. So I think that's what we did last year, if I'm not mistaken. I think we did that last year, so what I can do, we can check in with Superintendent Wimmer and see if we can't provide some of that for you, so.
Yeah, I would like some more context from the superintendent for each of these, and like what, how they might affect our district, her opinion on that, or her insight. I mean, we'll still vote how we will, but I would like to hear her opinion on these resolutions.
These different resolutions have a very wide variety of impact in different districts, whether you're property-rich or property-poor, declining enrollment or growing, and.
Rural versus metro, I remember last year, there was a big resolution that had to do with internet access that was obviously extremely important to rural school districts versus ours, that sort of thing, yeah. So we'll discuss that on the 10th. Thanks, Andy.
And thank you for volunteering to go. I, it happens to fall the same week as our annual industry conference, so I never get to go.
I think since you were appointed our last delegate, and it's not an action item, that appointment remains. So you're it. Thank you, Joel, for serving.
You bet.
All right. Our last discussion item relates to grades K through eight literacy. And Laura Jackson, I believe Dr. Rice is going to be joining us as well.
And Dr. Rice will actually be doing the presentation for the board tonight?
Great. Dr. Rice, good evening.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Good.
It's great to be here, thank you so much. I'm just going to give you a little bit of update, and we're going to switch over to the right presentation here. I'm going to be talking about K-8 literacy, and I wanted to just fill you in that, as Ms. Dove said, on last week, Tuesday, for the curriculum committee, we did go into a deeper presentation, and we did go into some historical view on K-8 literacy and kind of where we are now. The presentation tonight is really centering on the current status and where we're going forward for next steps. Yeah, thank you. All right. So we really have two items that we're going to talk about. The first is an update on the current status of K-8 literacy resources, and the second is the next steps that we're going to be taking forward. So currently, the West Bend School District is in a multi-year partnership with the Partnerships in Comprehensive Literacy Institute. That overall institute is a framework for literacy instruction, and it's important to clarify that it is not a curriculum and it is not, and it is not tools for literacy instruction. It is really an overall framework that teachers learn best practice, they learn strategies and methods for teaching literacy. It is not curriculum and it is not resources, and that's really important to understand. There are 10 key features of the model, and if our assistant here can click on that model. You can see when you look at those 10 key features, those really get to the point of being about teacher understanding about literacy, setting up their classroom processes and practices, and not specifically about resources or about instructional tools. And so I just wanted to point that out because it is linked in the presentation, and it will give you a little more context for what the PCL model actually is. Thank you. The next slide actually has two definitions on it, and there seems to be a really great opportunity to share with you these two definitions because these things come up when talking about the Partnerships in Comprehensive Literacy Model quite a bit. And they interchange, but also they have different kind of points in the model. So comprehensive literacy actually is in the title, PCL, so that is kind of the overarching piece of the PCL model. Balanced literacy is mentioned a lot because that is something that fits underneath the framework. And so I just wanted to be clear with you all to know that these are both things of PCL, but it's important to know that they're both kind of within the model, and they both bring differences. The more distinct differences are the leveled literacy tools from a leveled and guided approach to reading. One takes a more guided approach, one takes a more genre approach to literacy, but they both fit in the model. So just for clarification. You'll see that then this fits into the overarching framework for PCL. So if you look at the document with the framework on it, the language workshop is the overall kind of big-ticket piece at the top. And then all these other pieces that you're probably familiar with these terms, reading workshop, writing workshop, content workshop happen underneath that. Content workshop is a time to teach things like science and social studies within those literacy frameworks and kind of connect those things together. Small group instruction, and then independent practice and teacher and student conferring goes on also within that framework. So these are the big kind of rocks of the framework that then resources fit into. So our current status is that we are in the third year of this PCL framework. It was brought forward in 1819. The idea was really to build the capacity of staff through literacy knowledge, through best practice, and those important things. As you know, something called COVID came along and kind of interrupted some of that implementation. But as we've gone through, we've continued to look at what things happened, what things didn't happen, and what things do we need to continue to bring forward. So we continue to look at that model, but just clearly understanding also that we're building this framework to then put resources into. So the current work is that grade-level teachers, literacy specialists, instructional coaches, and the literacy coordinator for the district have collaborated really on a series of what we call units of study and writing lessons for reading and writing. a series of what we call units of study and writing lessons for reading and writing. In order to do that, there's some key resources that they're looking to bring forward. And those key resources are listed on this list. It's the Reading Mini Lessons Fountas and Pennell book for K-6, the Writing Mini Lessons Fountas and Pennell book for K-1, the Reading Strategies book from Jennifer Saravello for 7-8, the Writing Strategies book from Jennifer Saravello for two, grades two through eight. We have a timeline for this, and I believe Lenny mentioned a bit of this timeline too when he gave the superintendent's report. So on December 7th, we met with the Curriculum Committee. The materials, those books I just mentioned in the last slide, have been on public viewing options at the public library, and then they are coming back to the district this week. They will be available for viewing and feedback at the district office through the 22nd. On December 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, there will be a time set aside for people if they want to come at night. And on Saturday, December 18th, there's a time for people to come and view them from 10:00 to 11:30. In addition, if anybody needs to make an appointment or wants to make an appointment outside of those hours, we certainly will honor that also. So we will be bringing this back just January 10th and January 24th for then school board action. The last slide is just a same thing I just said, just a visual timeline for anybody that needs a visual timeline, just another version of looking at it, and hopefully that's helpful. So any questions about K-8 literacy?
So Jill, you talked about, you know, the history, 1819, this, this was, came in and was started. What was the envisioned implementation completion window at that point? And I guess I'll stop on that question first.
Yeah, that's a great question. It really was a three-year implementation, so we would be nearing the end of that three years. But with this COVID interruptions and different things with schools and all that, it hasn't gone quite as smooth as we anticipated, so there's going to need to be an extension on it. Part of that extension, too, is getting these resources in and getting the lessons ready for people to actually have in their classrooms.
If we had to estimate a percentage of completion, I'm going into my project manager mindset now, so if we're at the end of the envisioned timeframe, are we 50% there, 98% there?
I would say we're probably about 60%, 65%, maybe in some areas, 70%. There are quite a number of things, and I believe that in the past, you guys have seen a number of documents with kind of all the bulleted points that were going to happen. If you look at those lists, there's some of those, on each list, there's some bulleted points that happen and some that didn't. So if we take the comprehensive piece, I would say probably 65% to 70%, but there's still work to do.
Sure. And then you, you know, you pull back, you reassess, and you come up with new plans, and we've identified other things that weren't necessarily envisioned going in. So fast forward from January 24th, assume this gets board approval, then what does the future look like, and what is, what is that revised timeline?
Yeah, that's, that's really great, too. So the future looks like then we get these resources in, people continue writing these units and attaching the resources, and then we look to see if there's any other supplemental resources that we need to bring forward, which we potentially will need to do that and bring forward for additional look by the board, look by the public, those types of things. This is sort of a, I want to say a flexible process because, as we know, teaching and learning isn't an exact science, right? And we do need to bring in responsive tools for the students. And one of the things about this model is it really is about responding to students, and if we can do that, we probably need to come forward with tools and things at different points. Mr. Harder, can you go back to that model? If we go back to this model and look at the different components in the model, there'll be times where we'll probably bring forward some other things for writing, or some other things for content workshop and things like that. Because it is so comprehensive, there's a lot of different detail in it. And so I would say that by the end of this year, we should have a very good handle on where we are, and then projecting forward, if we're saying we're 60% to 70% this year, we should, within another year, be kind of right where we want to be. That's a very utopian view, but I believe it's doable.
Yeah, I'm thinking my girls, and the youngest graduated in 20, going through their time at Green Tree, you know, writer's workshop was already a term that we were familiar with. So I guess looking at this, both from my perspective of, ooh, there's a term I recognize, to, you know, the trained professionals that are in the classroom delivering this, how radically different is this framework from what they have, you know, been taught going through college continuing education and so forth? Is this, is this a dramatic shift, or is this a slight movement in a certain direction?
It is not a dramatic shift, and you're absolutely right. Some of these words and these phrases have been around for a very long time. Some of it goes back to the experts that we're pulling the research from or pulling the resources from to take kind of their slight, slight bend on writing workshop or reading workshop and what those things are. So this model has a little bit different bend than some of the writing workshops from the days that your daughters were at Green Tree. Part of the bend is students are responding to reading more than just writing, straight out writing a narrative writing piece. Now, there's probably some adjustment and some shift we need to do on that, but it's all about the, kind of the author and the research and the bend that they take on it.
I would add in that you've had presentations in the past from some of our model classroom teachers, and you know that we've had different, we haven't gone to other schools to do visits per se with our model classroom teachers. And you've also seen presentations like when we adopted the Word Study Program that we're using as part of this, with these workshops, that you've heard those terms before, and you heard Dr. Jill talk about the responsive nature of it. I would say that's one of the pieces that is more of a larger shift, is the individually responsive practice for our students, so that each child has what they need in that moment, rather than just the whole model of writer's workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
We've been asked this question before, so maybe this is an appropriate time to ask it through. We are still teaching Cursive in, for writing in the district.
So we are still teaching writing, and as students progress through the levels, yes, they are being taught Cursive. Students have response journals and writing notebooks that they write in. I get the great fortune to go look at them and see students in action with them, and so I was in a first grade room at one of the elementary schools, and they were writing Cursive in that book. So yes, we are.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify that because I've been asked.
The other part of the model, actually, now that you asked that, is the phonics piece, right? And so you guys, a number of, I think last year you adopted a Word Study Program, which is a phonics program, and we, that is taught through this model also.
So some things have changed in the last couple of years, and because we were responsive to people that were complaining that we didn't have Cursive, or we weren't doing phonics. And so maybe previously, that wasn't being done, but we agreed that that is something that is important and we should bring back, and so thank you for doing so.
Yeah, that's a good point. One of the things about teaching Cursive is, I think back to when I was in school and I had Cursive sheets, right, and you practiced your Cursive letters. It's not that same kind of teaching Cursive, but it's teaching Cursive in terms of writing a piece of literature and writing in a notebook. And so it's not the same necessarily Cursive that I remember, but it is teaching Cursive writing.
New Cursive to go with new math.
Perfect.
Dr. Rice, as long as that diagram is up, I think you addressed this, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear. When we're talking about language and reading and writing, I mean, I remember growing up, I'll say in ancient times, there was an actual reading class, but I think you pointed out here as well, but you read in social studies, you read in science. So can you just, can you just refresh, refresh me on how, how might this spill over into non-specific reading classes, like science or social studies?
Right. So in the model, the idea is the content workshop brings in some other subject areas, right? But it's done connecting the literacy standards into those content areas, too. And so it's not that you're not learning about social studies, you're not learning about science, it's just if you're reading a book about something in science, you're going to use the strategies you learned in literacy to read that book, and it's connecting those things together. So it's making sure that there's some integration between that, but connecting them through the standards. And that's really what the push from the state and from, honestly, from the PCL model is to kind of interconnect those literacy standards into the other subject areas.
Well, I like that we're not confining literacy education to just the strict literacy classes that it's throughout. I appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions, thoughts?
I guess I'll go back to my PM platform for a moment. I certainly respect that we got a lot of stuff going on, both, you know, organizationally as well as external factors, COVID and et cetera, et cetera. You know, that dumpster fire doesn't need to be talked about again. But I also, my background is operations management, and one of the things that I learned early on is lead time is a self-fulfilling prophecy. We don't want to race through this. We don't want to do it wrong. We don't want to blow out the system and the capacity of the teachers to do it, but I also want to be careful that it doesn't take us another 24 or 36 months. I think, you know, we've heard over the years that our teachers are tired of all the change. I just want to teach. And within that context, I understand that we also need to be dynamic and adjusting because where the kids are at today versus where they were three years ago is a completely different animal because of COVID and virtual and so forth. So we can't say that we're done, and then we stop and we go back to just, just teaching, air quotes, and so forth. But I want to make sure that we, we come up with a realistic timeline and because, you know, three years to implement, I've seen organizations implement a newer ERP system in less time. So we need to be sensitive to the systems, but at the same time, we need to be sensitive to our staff and get them into the new way of doing things and let them teach.
I agree.
All right, so we will see this again for discussion in January, correct? January 10th?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I will just pull up our board calendar since that's the next item on the agenda.
While you do that, Mr. Hanson just slipped me a note that said the WASB Delegate Assembly is on January 19th, and our next board meeting is on the 10th, so we'll be able to discuss those resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So for our board meeting calendar, on January 4th, 2022, there will be a Curriculum Committee meeting at 8:00 AM here at the Education Service Center, and we have our regular board meetings scheduled on January 10 and January 24, each at 5:30 PM and at the Education Service Center as well. Under items for follow-up and communication, I had for the WASB resolutions for the agenda, perhaps next time, are there any other items for follow-up? All right, hearing none, we have some items to discuss in executive session. So I would move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute's 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data, excuse me, of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation and evaluation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? This takes a roll call vote. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman is absent. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mrs. Weiger votes yes. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes 6-0. Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session. Have a good evening.